Remember to put the mic on. Good afternoon, everyone. So, let's just go through the preliminaries. So Housing Policy Committee, today's Thursday, the 23rd of October, in the afternoon for once, but we're back in the town hall here. So, thanks for coming. We've got most of the committee here. So, as always, the meeting's open to public, it's being webcast. I'm told it's still possible that it's Sheffield Live TV, could be rebroadcasting. I don't know if that's actually true, but yeah, people could be watching at home now or afterwards. As usual, can everyone make sure their phones and laptops and things are turned silent? For people who don't know, the toilets are out, and just ask someone if you don't know where they are. And some of the fire tests, no fire tests today, so there's no, no fire test today. So if the fire alarm goes off, we have to get out and follow anyone else if you don't know where you're going. So with that done, we'll do the usual and go round the committee to get all the committee members' names for the webcast. So it starts with me. So I'm Douglas Johnson, Chair of the Housing Committee, and I will go round this way.
Paul Turpin, Green Party councillor for Glegas Valley.
Councillor Mike Leary, Member for West Echolsfield, and substitute for Penny Baker.
Good afternoon, I'm Richard Williams, and I represent East Stannington Ward.
Talia Dunlop, Second Consul for Burnley Ward.
Alison Norris, councillor for Woodhouse Ward.
Matt Dwyer, councillor for Burley Ward.
Fran Bellbin, councillor for Firth Park Ward and Labour spokesperson.
Great, thanks. And as the officers, I'll start over here.
Hello, I'm Sherry Grant, I'm Assistant Director for Legal Services.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm James Clark, I'm Director of Housing, thank you.
Joanne Coop, Democratic Services.
Great, thank you, everyone. And for anyone else, as usual, I'll ask you to introduce yourselves when you come to the table there. So, we'll move on to the agenda. So item one's apologies for absence. So as councillor Leary has noted, councillor Baker has to give apologies today, and he's covering for her. We also have apologies from councillor Atkinson, and I can see that everyone else is here. On exclusion of press and public, we don't have anything that's actually excluded on this agenda today, do we? So that's okay, no concerns there. Declarations of interest, does anyone need to make a declaration of interest? Not seeing anyone, so I'll take that as none. Minutes of previous meeting are on page 11 of the Agenda Pack. So, going to ask, does anyone have any corrections to make to those? Or can there be someone to propose we accept them as a true record? Councillor Bellbin proposing that, and I'll just formally second that then. Is everyone happy with that? All agreed? Right, so we can approve those minutes, and I'll sign a copy in due course, Joanne. On public petitions, questions and statements, so, let's ask Joanne to confirm in a moment. We've got one public question that's been responded to, and you'll find that on the website, concerning the tenant's levy. And I think there's one supplementary question in relation to that, which I don't think we have the question here today. We'll just add that to the element on the website, it's on the same topic of the tenant's levy there. I think that's what proposed for that. Do we have any other questions or statements? No, Joanne, thanks, all right. Okay. In which case, I think that is item five done. So item six is members' questions, I don't think we have any, do we? No, okay. Item seven then, so, we're hearing it's really fast, but this is a work programme, so it's time to hand over to Joanne.
Thank you, Chair. In terms of the work programme, the only thing really to highlight is that the flexible tenancies and tenancy strategy update, which was due to come to this meeting pre-consultation, has been moved to come to the January meeting of next year, post-consultation. I don't know if anybody wants to say anything about that or not, before I move on.
Anyone want to comment on that? I mean, I think it was, there was a bit of a discussion, maybe it was just, it felt that there was more consultation needed before the paper was brought to the committee. So if we're all happy with that. What else, Joanne?
The other, the other main thing to highlight is, it's been distributed to members, and I've handed out a few paper copies. We had a resolution from full council, which included a couple of actions for this committee. So the resolution from council was on dying in poverty. The first section was to ask the Housing Policy Committee to consider adding to its work programme a campaign within the Warm Homes Programme to work with Sheffield residents with a terminal illness. The proposed response to that is, as we enter year two and three of the Warm Homes Programme, the committee will ask officers in partnership with National Energy Action to undertake outreach work with health and support services, for example Macmillan and Hospices, to promote the scheme and support applicants to complete a Warm Homes grant application. The second action was on the same motion, was to ask the Housing Policy Committee to ensure the needs of terminally ill people are considered when reviewing the council housing succession policy and the vulnerable customers policy. The proposed response to that is, the succession policy is currently contained within the council's allocations policy. We're currently consulting on removing from the succession policy, sorry, on removing the succession policy from the allocation policy. The needs of terminally ill people will be considered as part of this review. If agreed, the council will confirm our approach to succession via the council's website. The vulnerable customers policy is due to go before the Housing Policy Committee in January 2026 for approval. This policy incorporates bereavement as a factor which may influence vulnerability. The policy sets out a framework for how the housing service will ensure that it accounts for the issue of vulnerability and how it will remove barriers to increase access to its services. So those are the proposed responses to the actions. The second recommendation on this report includes agreeing any referrals from committees. So if we're agreeing their recommendations on this report, we're also agreeing that response. It doesn't require a separate vote. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks for clarifying that. So councillor Bellbin, I'll bring you in a moment. But I think the point I'd want to make is that it's important we pick up all these referrals from full council, whether we get them into a process of some sort, rather than try and make policy decisions on the hoof here. But I think the proposal here is they will be picked up by existing processes. Councillor Bellbin, do you want to come in now?
Yeah, just to be absolutely clear, on the discussion around the succession policy, I think that amendment was made in the knowledge that we were consulting on removing the succession policy from the allocations policy. I think there's an assumption, it's not absolutely spilled out here, so just being clear. I think there was a bit of an assumption that the succession policy would then be reviewed separately from, if that's what does go ahead, would then be reviewed separately, and that this is considered as part of any review of that policy. So I just think the wording in this is a bit, it's a bit confusing as to whether it's talking about the succession policy or the allocation policy, or both. So I'm just trying to be absolutely clear on that.
So just from my point of view, I think that it's, the current position is, we do have a succession policy, it's currently written in the allocations policy, so therefore it must necessarily be looked at as part of the allocations policy review. But I think you're right in saying that following that, there could be further work to be done in looking at that at some point. But I'm kind of saying, in terms of disposing it for today, it might sometimes be sort of, you know, keep until that process. So it is at least in a process. Obviously, we'll have to have a record today that we're pushing, this issue that's been proposed by full council into the remit of the allocations policy review. But hopefully that, there will be a record of that there. Does that, is that accorded with what you're thinking there? Okay, all right. Yes, councillor Williams.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just coming back to the first of the two points, it talks about undertaking outreach work, et cetera. Would it be possible to build into our work programme for the future, kind of like a review of what that's achieved and the scale of it all, and just to see if it's actually making a positive impact?
Yes, we probably could do that. Might take advice from Joanne, see if we could deal with that, even if it's a case of taking a note of that now. I mean, it's quite right to look at, you know, how effective the work that's been done, and undoubtedly has been done. But see how effective it is and what the feedback loop from that is. I'll bring in James Clark.
Thank you. Councillor Williams, if this is in relation to the first one, the Warm Homes Programme one, then what I might suggest to the committee is that we wrap that up into what we've already committed to do, which is a regular briefing to the committee on progress against the commitments we've made around decarbonisation, retrofit, and the wider kind of energy work that we're doing. So if colleagues are happy, we can, we can wrap it up in the same place.
If that makes members' approvals, then perhaps we'd have a note of that for to draw, pick up that item there. Okay, all right. Just one further point is, so if, if we look at the list of, it's on page 24, the list of the items that are being moved to other committee dates, in view of what Joanne's just read out as our proposal about dealing with the vulnerable customers policy, that is now due to come to committee in January 2026. So I think formally we'll need to adjust that on the work plan too.
Sorry, that was decided after this went to press, but yeah, that'll be reported at the next committee.
Okay, right. But we, just on our work plan, we, so that everything's consistent, we could adjust that on the work plan today if we add it as an extra item to the items already spelt out on page 24. Okay, all right. Sorry, councillor Norris.
Just on the work programme, that we don't have a slot for fire safety, fire safety external wall FRAs coming back to committee, and I think it should have one, it shouldn't just be in the pending.
We, we'll have to address the issue, whether, we might need a bit more work to think what the item would be in terms of the work plan.
It's just that it was on the pending, and it seemed like an important thing not to...
Right, sorry, you referred to a particular item in the pending list.
Yeah, and I just thought we should allocate it to a slot for, obviously appropriately when we've got the information, but...
Yeah, so I think the...
On page 30.
Okay. I think the significance of the pending list is it's specific items of work we should identify that need to come to committee, but we can't really be sure of a date because it depends on all the things. So they're on there so that we don't lose sight of them. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just wondered when we are likely to know for that one.
I'll bring in James.
Thank you. Good spot, councillor Norris. So we have actually, we have actually completed the external wall FRAs now, but only in the last kind of couple of weeks. I'm happy to do what the committee wants us to do. We can either do a standard own report, or I could suggest that we wrap this up into our quarterly report we do on reporting around compliance, so we can do a specific section the next time we come to the committee, just outlining the results of the external wall FRA. And colleagues are already aware of some of the immediate mitigations we've had to put in place across some tower blocks that resulted from those FRAs. And I'm conscious we haven't provided full briefing on, on the other things that those FRAs have told us, so we can do that at the same time, if that's okay?
Yeah, that would, that would be good.
So just, Chair, what's the proposal dealing with this? Are we going to leave this as pending, but actually aim to get it on the work plan and with briefings to members, so that we can perhaps wrap it up at the next committee meeting and formally give the date?
I think what James was suggesting was it would just come as part of the next quarterly report.
Which I think means, Chair, we can remove it from the work programme if colleagues agree, but with a note that we, we cover off the content in the next quarterly update to the committee, where we set out performance and assurance and compliance work.
Okay, that's fine. Members happy with that, so we'll bring that into the, the item on performance, okay, all right. Any other ones? Right, councillor Turpin.
Thanks. At the beginning of the municipal year, we had a meeting to work out what we wanted to go on to the work plan, because there was a general feeling that members were not steering the work plan enough, and we were largely passing policies and statutory obligations that were presented to us. And everybody wanted to have more input into the things that we discussed and how we steer housing in Sheffield. And we had, we had a long meeting, and we came up with ideas, and really, there is, because the agendas have still not really reflected that meeting, and, because I was going to say, not the, not the same item, item as Alison, but, you know, the garages letting scheme that's still on there with no date and no update. And we also, I raised about the policy of shared ownership in the council, and was told, I think it was Dean, but it might not, it might have been James or someone, saying that that work could be undertaken as part of another body of work, which also doesn't appear to be on the work plan. And so it's just a bit disappointing that when, when we want to give some steer to how we run the committee, that the agenda is still just full of things that, that officers are asking us to rubber stamp.
Yep, okay. I mean, we shouldn't be doing rubber stamping. So what have we got? We've got garages that are on the list, we've got shared ownership that isn't on there as a specific item, because it's more of a discussion. I mean, saying that we need to, I mean, I guess members need some more work to get briefings in on those at some point. Would that, would that help to move things on a bit? I mean, I think we perhaps need some shared understanding of what the issues are on those, so that we're in a position to ask for reports with a view to making any necessary decisions.
Yeah, it, it feels like that, you know, we're looking through the future agendas, that they, you know, they've been accounted for with things that officers want us to do, and not with things that councillors wanted to do. And there's no, no room for those things to happen. And of course, you know, we don't know what will happen after May. Let's make no assumptions. We don't know who will, who will be on this committee, we don't know who will be chairing this committee. And those items could just disappear again.
Could do, yeah. I'm bringing councillor Bellbin.
Thank you. I think, I mean, I think part of the purpose of that meeting at the beginning of the year was not just to kind of pull a big list together, if you like, because we've already got a big list to some extent, but to plan ahead of where we needed to be briefed, where we needed knowledge briefings, where we really need to think about how much time we need to make a decision, what kind of evidence we need putting in front of us around a decision. So I think it wasn't just about creating that list, if you like. And I think as well, we've got to be really clear where there are decisions to make, that we're not just bringing discussion items, if you like, to committee, but we need to be clear about where we have to actually make a decision. Otherwise, you know, we could have a potentially endless list of, I'm sure there are lots of things that lots of us would like to discuss. I think, from my mind, I think we didn't finish that discussion though, I do think you're right. I think we were probably having a conversation about prioritisation that perhaps did not get finished. And I think, you know, we have flagged that up from time to time as something we need to do. I do think we need to be realistic as well about how much business we can put through the committee. And to some extent, there will always be things that we absolutely have to take. You know, we've got the HRA business plan coming up, those things have to be done, and we have to recognise that. So I suppose I'm agreeing in part, councillor Turpin, but also I do think we've got to be really clear about when it's about taking a decision and not just about having items on the agenda because they're interesting.
Yeah, I just want to say that I know that, like, that, that work planning session was quite precious to you because it was, it was a suggestion that you made, and it was a good idea. And it, and it acknowledged that councillors are elected by the public, and we're in touch with the public, and we're accountable to the public, and we understand their views because we're in touch with the public, and that we wanted more input. And rather than having another committee that just becomes a rubber stamping mission of policies that are put in front of us by officers, that we wanted to have more control over what we discussed, so that we can influence how housing is done in the way that we believe our constituents would like it to be done. And, and it just doesn't feel that that's been reflected. And halfway through the year, it doesn't look like there's room for those things to be discussed. And of course, you know, the discussion would hopefully lead to a decision, a policy, a strategy, you know, it's a... I don't see the point in having an idle talking shop. I would like to see some results from the discussion. And that's why I don't see the possibility of happening on, on some of those things in the, in the future work plan.
Well, okay. In order to move it on, so it's not an idle talking shop in here, can we, can I actually take note of that? I mean, there's two things there specifically identified about need for looking garages and shared ownership. Can we record those in the minutes? There's two items flagged up, that certainly garage is on the work plan already. And we'll see, yeah, we need to see where we can fit them in. But let's, let's just suggest we park that for now, otherwise we'll not get through all the other items, which we do need to get through. If so, that brings us to just formally resolving, let's go back to page 22. So we've asked you, agree the work plan as set out, essentially with the revisions that have been listed on page 30, and with the revisions that Joanne has just outlined, and noting the points that were made a moment ago. So if we can ask Joanne to write those into a sort of readable form of the minutes, which I'm not doing very well with now, is everyone broadly happy with that? Is everyone happy to proceed on that basis? Yep, nods, yeah, all right. Let's take that as approved unanimously, and we'll move on. Okay, great, thanks, everyone. So, back to the agenda, so the next item is on to the substance, on to the equipment and adaptations policy. So, would you like some, someone to come up to the hot desks? And I'm just wondering if we've got name cards for everyone? I think that, do you want to see if you've got a name card for yourself? And then I'll ask you to, to introduce yourselves, and, yeah, do you want to introduce yourselves? And then introduce the report briefly, assuming that, you know, members have had the chance to read the papers, know what's in them, and, yeah, over to you.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Dean Glatworth, I'm the Assistant Director of Neighbourhoods.
Hi, I'm Kayla Kamagian, and I'm the Asset Policy Officer.
Thank you. The, the council has a statutory duty to provide adaptations to support tenants with disabilities. Also, since April 2024, 2.4 of the regulatory code that is acting quality consumer standard notes, registered providers must clearly communicate to tenants and relevant organisations how they will assist tenants seeking housing adaptation services. The main aim of this policy is to be clear and transparent and provide commentary, a complementary policy to the private sector housing assistance policy that was approved by committee earlier this year. The policy that we are asking for approval today sets out the eligibility criteria, the level of urgency within the adaptation, how we'll deal with both simple and complex adaptations, the timescale for decision-making, and the reasons for refusals and the appeals process. As I say, we, I'm assuming that members have read the report, and both Kayla and me are here to answer any questions today.
Right, thank you very much. So we've got the report here, and we'll see if we've been this informative. So questions? I think it's councillor Dwyer, let's go first.
Yeah, thank you. And just, some were on, in the report, not the policy. One was, it was talking about occupational therapists and some of the timelines for how long it takes to get an occupational therapist appointment, and then linking into our timelines in our policy of implementation. It might be quite difficult to get, achieve our timelines with the, how long it takes to get an occupational therapist appointment. And then I suppose the big question linking to that is on, in the report, but not in the policy. It refers to one of the reasons that you could, for refusal is, an OT recommends applicant moves to receive care, but the Care Act and the policies of the council go the other way, and care should be provided at home first. And I assume that's why it's not in the policy, as wording, but it is in the report saying that that'd be a reason why we refuse. But it'd probably be cheaper for the council if people are staying in their own home and we make adaptations rather than moving into a care home. I just didn't know whether, which one applies, the report, the policy.
Just for your answer, can you just check which paragraph from the report we're looking at, just for reference for everyone else?
At 7.1, it's on page, sorry, 39, second bullet point.
Yeah. Thank, thank you very much, it was really helpful that you spotted that. Dean and Kayla, what do you think?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I think what we do recognise is that the customer journey in terms of the adaptation process needs to be reviewed, and we need to be very clear in relation to the communication that we send out and the timelines that we are going to achieve. And again, whilst there are timelines in there, there will be applications that exceed the timelines that Louise set. What we've got to be able to make sure is that we've got our communication strategy in place, so that we are communicating with all stakeholders, particularly the person who's asked for the adaptation, so that we're very clear and transparent as to, one, what we can and what we can't do, but then also in relation to why there is a particular delay in this particular case. I think in relation to the, the second question, I think potentially we may need to come back and ask the question in, in terms of the due legal process that's saying which, which aspects takes precedence. But I think we can come back before the next meeting and conclude that question.
Sorry, just having a sip of water. I think it's important to cover that, partly because it came up at the Tenant Voices Matter meeting earlier this week, and with someone describing their personal experience of going through the process of asking for either adaptations or a move, and the importance of the council giving the right communications so that they can make an informed choice, essentially. It's about whether it's better to go down the adaptations route, or comparing it and contrasting in a way with what rehousing and what a move actually means, and whether that would provide the care and on what timescale. So not an easy one to bottom out, but I think, as Dean said, it's somewhat, something that does need to be addressed there. I'll take councillor Sane first, and then councillor Norris.
Thank you, Chair. Is number four, complex adaptation. I believe there are many blocks in city centre, in whole city, and many in my ward, Burnley Ward. How would you facilitate adaptation facility in block of flats, a leaseholder and a property owner in that block of flats?
Sorry, if I think I understood that, this is just in relation to only our tenants? So if they're a private owner, it doesn't apply? Like, it's, it's in the private sector housing assistance policy? Is that...
But what council tenant and leaseholder leave it to the private owner, but you know, how would you...
Thank you, councillors. So I think one of the challenges we've got, and this is where we need to work better in collaboration with our occupational therapist service, because we know that the occupational therapist will always review the individual property and understand the adaptations and the equipment that is needed within there. If we talk about the many 3,000 blocks of flats that we've got across the city and the communal space that we have there, normally if it's a residential property semi-detached or a terrace property, and there's issues in terms of access to the first floor, we may put a stair lift in. It's a completely different proposition if it's a first-floor flat and there's a communal stairwell and the issues of actually doing that piece of work. So it's, it's a conversation that we need to have with the occupational therapist at that particular time. And this is where some of the more fundamental challenges come into place in, in terms of, is it a case of doing the adaptation, or do we have an individual conversation with, with the resident in the household about more suitable accommodation, and then how do we provide that?
Thank you. Just want to bring in James.
I was just going to link the two points, because I think it also speaks to your point, councillors, why. So there's three words, I forget what the one is, but, but adaptations have to be reasonable, practicable, and another word, Kayla, which I've forgotten, but we all remember, but, but that's part of the legislative framework. So it, even though that principle of wherever we can, keeping someone in their own property is better for them, better for the system, there will be cases where either the cost is so high, or it's just not feasible in terms of delivery, because it's a communal area, for example. That's often where an OT will then kind of push a recommendation around rehousing, even if that isn't the wishes of the, of the individual.
And I think just to round off councillor Sane's point, there is another policy that relates to adaptations, so how we provide it for all private sector tenants and occupiers, this is about council tenants. Okay, we've got councillor Norris next, and then we've got councillor Williams after that.
Yeah, it was just linked to the points that people have raised already, and what you were saying from the Tenant Voices Matter meeting. It's obviously, I just wondered if there's any way of clarifying the sort of criteria we're using when we're balancing those different, difficult choices between a complex adaptation and rehousing. And both of those are tricky options, because we don't have very many options open at the moment for rehousing, particularly for larger families, and also we don't, even people who've got complex adaptations agreed... particularly for larger families, and also we don't, even people who've got complex adaptations agreed are waiting several years for those to be. So I appreciate there's no magic ones here, I suppose is what I'm saying, but that clarification we just had was really helpful and whether there can be a bit more of that in the policy.
No, I think that is totally appropriate. And as I say, each of these particular cases has got to be dealt with on a case-by-case basis, based on the individual needs of the resident or the household within there. And some of this, as you say, is the understanding the stock that we've got. It's understanding the adaptations that we've already made in some of the other stock that we've got, and understanding particularly in locality, what changes that we can make. Because in some respects it will be unreasonable for us to make a recommendation to move somebody from one side of the city to another side of the city where a support network is already in place to support the independent living of that individual or household. So it's understanding what stock we've got available, what the cost is of the equipment to the adaptation that needs to go into there. So if we are talking, for example, of a through roof lift into a property whereby potentially there is a nearby suitable property of ground floor accommodation that will meet that particular need, that those are the conversations that we'll be having with the occupational therapist and the individual residents, say which is the best suited option for you. But unfortunately, sometimes cost does come into play on this particular issue, but also the actual individual needs of the resident or the household.
Thanks for clarifying that. Can we move on to councillor Williams?
Thank you Chair. Yeah, I mean, I think over the last few years, this council's put a lot of focus on public consultations. On that basis, it was slightly disappointing to see the figures in the report. If I've got it correctly, and I sometimes don't get it correct, only forty-eight, there were only forty-eight complete responses, which is incredibly low for such an important topic. And you quite rightly, in the report that follows that, you've observed some of the comments that were made, but recognised that it might have been one or two people, so it's hardly a public opinion. Interestingly though, it says in the report that you had a large number, 284 views from people who I assume weren't council tenants, and they were told that they couldn't complete the report, the consultation. And maybe that's something we should be looking in the future because, you know, Sheffield, all Sheffield residents have the right to express a view about something that the council's providing. And I think so perhaps for the future, we look at how we do these things. Thank you.
I think it's a fair comment. I don't know how much response do we need on that. Okay, all right. But speaking of councillor Bellbin, I want to say something.
Thank you. My point was on the consultation as well actually, and I mean, I agree with councillor Williams there. And I think it's always good to not just rely on have your say for when we're looking at how we're doing this work. But given that we did do the survey and even though it was a limited number of responses, I did particularly pick out, there was a response that somebody said, and it said a couple of people said this actually, that they felt quite judged when they're asking for adaptations, and that feels like not a very nice thing for people to feel. And I just wondered, have we done some training with staff? Obviously, we don't want people to be feeling like that because they need an adaptation in their home. I don't know, you know, what was behind, obviously that particular person or those particular people's feelings. But have we done some kind of training with our staff around how we communicate compassionately with people when they're, you know, when they're in need of these kinds of adaptations?
Point seventeen.
Thank you councillor Bellbin. I think the simple answer to that is no, but we need to do more. And what we need to do when we start looking at the customer journey is focus on that customer centred approach to how we're going to deliver the communication, the message that we're going to give within this. So we'll give the commitment that when we take this away from here and we start to understand what that timeline is from application to decision, we will make sure that the appropriate training is given to the right staff.
Thanks. I think so is a really important point, isn't it? Because adaptations only arise when people are at quite a difficult point in their life. And if it means you have a prospect of not being able to stay in your home, yeah, there's some pretty important decisions to make there. And not seeing any immediate hands up, so move to recommendation a moment. I'm just thinking ahead. I mean, I think it's fair to say this is a new policy that we haven't had before. It's very similar to the private sector policy, but also substantially different in important ways of managing resources. I suspect it is one where it would be really useful to learn from experience about how it operates and then come back for a review at some point. Not necessarily saying the committee should ask for a review to come back here, unless anyone wants to propose that. But I'm just flagging up that we should perhaps record the minutes, so we will need to review it in the light of experience and maybe ask officers to find a super way of feeding back to us about the learning that's come from that, in particular the gaps in the policy that we might need to address at some point and how those might be addressed in due course. Councillor Williams, yes?
Apologies Chair, yeah. Just looking, considering this, there's nothing in the policy that talks about budget, as far as I can see. Now, worst case scenario, in a particular period of time, you get a mass of genuine applications, and all legitimate, all covered by OT et cetera. What happens? I mean, do you just have to put a cap on what can be done in any particular twelve months? Or is there a queuing system that suddenly comes into place?
That good question. I think there's a difference between mandatory adaptations that we have to do, whatever the level of demand is, and then adaptations where we have some discretion. And my understanding is that's exactly right. Some customers may have to wait a period of time to get the adaptation that they need and they want because the budget isn't available and it's not a mandatory adaptation.
Right Chair. Well, I mean, worst case scenario, say that your mandatory applications, just, there's a flood of them. I mean, is there scope, do we just have to go to reserves or is it more money made available?
Fortunately, we've not been in that position as yet, and we have a good understanding and good record of the number of adaptations that we get every year. One of the things that we are looking at in future when we do our update of our computer operating systems is to fully understand where the adaptations are across the city. So it won't be a case of every property will get a new adaptation as requested. We will have a better understanding of, we've already got those adaptations that are suitable in other properties that may be empty at that particular time, and we use, we better use of the stock that we've currently got.
Thanks. It's always a valid question, and of course is much like every aspect of the council and how it operates. Things are essentially led by demand, that's demand by other people, and how we have to manage those with the best predictions available as to what's likely to happen. But yeah, we can note that. Is everyone happy to look at the recommendations on there? Which are very simple, and it's on page thirty-five, and it's simply to approve the policy that's in the form set out in the appendix. Everyone happy with that? Quick show of hands to show support for the new policy. Great, thanks very much. I'll take that as unanimous, if we can record that. Thank you very much Kayla and Dean, and we can move on to the next item. So Suzanne and Laura, I think you might want to come up for the homeless prevention and rough sleeping strategy and the rough sleeping update and action plan. Let's focus on the action plan, it's an update to that. So yeah, if you want to come and take your seats, obviously introduce yourselves for the record with your name cards and take us briefly through what the report is.
Hello, so I'm Laura Costram, the Service Manager for Commissioning and Partnerships within Hounty and Neighbourhoods. And so this report is an update on the homeless prevention strategy and the rough sleeping strategy and action plan. There was a previous update that came in September 2024, and the committee have asked for an annual oversight and update on that. It sets out the achievements to date and the priorities moving into year three. And alongside that, it seeks approval for the distribution of grants, ring fenced additional grant income from the rough sleeping prevention recovery grant. So there's been some significant progress since the last report and update. So there's been some key achievements in the reduction of temporary accommodation, the increase in prevention outcomes for households that are seeking assistance in homelessness, and specifically some reduction in rough sleeping around long-term people that have got long-term more entrenched patterns of rough sleeping. Moving forward into year three, we're really focused on some new and emerging strategies and also trends that are happening with an emphasis on streamlining those actions to make sure we've got more of an holistic overview around what's happening and how we can prioritise the delivery of that. And then in terms of the grant allocation, so we do use some grants to enable us to deliver some of those actions on the strategy. But the resources are very much pulled in from the wider and broader partnership. Specifically in this report, we have had an additional in-year grant allocation with a condition attached to it around the distribution to the voluntary care and faith sector. And we are proposing that we distribute 841,000 of that grant allocation to the sector in areas such as targeted interventions around rough sleeping, further improvement around the identification where prevention could be embedded, and developing multi-service arrangements to respond to rough sleeping. So that's a summary of the report, open to any questions.
Right, thanks very much. Suzanne, do you want to introduce yourself for the record? I don't see anything you need to add, it sounds like Laura's covered it, but.
Yes, thank you. I'm Suzanne Allen, I'm the Assistant Director for Supported Housing and Homelessness, not citywide housing any longer, I changed my job title. The only thing I did want to add in respect to the in-year allocation is that that is a one-off allocation, which is why we've made specific recommendations, and how we use it was subject to agreement with MHCLG. So it isn't recurrent, so we're trying to think about what would make systemic change rather than put something into initiatives which will then just end.
Thanks. So it's quite an important clarification, and just to, in year, so for us to allocate that money, that has to be spent by the end of March?
It has to be committed, yes.
Thanks very much, okay. So any questions for any members on this? And obviously, the mix of good and bad messages, the fact that as you say in here, homelessness is still a persistent challenge in Sheffield, as it is everywhere, and it's important not to shy away from that fact. But the figures here show the inroad that's been made into the real challenges that the council's been trying to deal with that. Councillor Norris, were you first on that?
Just a practical thing, on the action plan review, we've got boxes that say not started or stalled. It'd be really helpful if that could be separated out into stalled and planned for the future, and in which case roughly when, you know, which year it's coming in? Because it's hard to monitor where there's a problem versus where it's just, it's on the work plan, but it's, we've just not got there yet.
Yeah, so the action plan following approval will have delivery years and performance measures and things like that in place. What we want to be able to do is engage with a broader partnership to determine how they should be prioritised. So they will be in there and we can separate that wording out.
Okay, thanks very much. Councillor Bellbin, did you want to come in?
Thank you. Yes, I wanted to focus mainly on the action plan, but I do want to say it's great that we've got additional funding for rough sleeping, whether it's one year or not, so thank you to MHCLG for that. It's really positive, and I think you've answered my question there, which was a bit about the funding that talks about and then committing by April. But you're saying that's a commitment, we don't have to spend by then, we have to commit by then because some of the actions I think are longer than six months, aren't they? So I think that straightens it out. But I really wanted to focus around the, well, first of all, some of the really fantastic work that's gone on around rough sleeping that I think is really positive, that has been really drawn out in this report. Really pleased to see linking effectively to use of the Public Space Protection Order, I think that's really positive. And really note as well that the successful interventions have been really based around peer support, using people with lived experience to inform that work, and around effective partnership. This is all very much stuff that was encouraged through the Sheffield Poverty Truth Commission, which you are all going to get bored of hearing me talking about quite soon. But it was very much promoted by the Truth Commissioner in the report that we've done there, around ways to make really meaningful change is using that lived experience. So I think this is evidence of that approach really working, and there's some really positive things in there. Also, I just wanted to, I think the action plan looks to be, it's obviously changed quite substantially. I think it's looking much more strategic and starting to feel much more clearly tied in with other council strategies, which I think is really good. Great to see it referencing the community strategy, it was only passed last week, so that was there. Very good to get that tied in so quickly, but also, you know, the way it's tied into the customer experience work, Future Sheffield, looking at how using data to lead the work and the development of, you know, other pieces of work. As well as the PSPO, it talks around tech-enabled care and really linking in across the piece. It feels, yeah, like a really, it's really developing well, I think. And the description of the summit that you had around rough sleeping is really interesting. And I was also really pleased to see the rammed about project reference in there, the upstream early intervention model, which I think is, again, is something we've been looking at through the Poverty Truth Commission and the Refugee Focused Housing Partnership as well. So lots of really good stuff in there, but I suppose a few questions that I want to ask in relation to that as well is to say that it's still a really big action plan, there are sixty-one actions in there, it is huge. So can we effectively prioritise it? And I appreciate you've started to answer that question. And I realise as well, it's about a partnership, this is not just about what our housing services deliver. So how are we aligning with our partners around this to deliver this plan? It feels like it is a partnership plan rather than the Sheffield City Council plan, and it'd be nice to have a real feel of that at the moment. It'd also be nice, and probably should have asked this a while ago rather than asking it now, but in the future, it'd be really nice to see that partnership mapped out, what's the structure, the governing structure and so on. I think you refer to it, who are the partners and how are they working together? I think there's some elements of project work that is described within the report, but it'd be good to see that in the future. And it'd be really nice to see members of the partnership here, perhaps next time we look at this report as well. I know, you know, when we discussed the community strategy last week, we had people from the community organisations come to discuss the work, and that would be a good thing to do. And then just one other question specifically around how we're commissioning partners to do this work as well. Again, when we discussed the community strategy last week, we've committed that additional funding to look at different ways of commissioning partners to do work. And I just wondered if some of our housing partners, and particularly around homelessness, are part of how we were looking at different commissioning models and are part of that conversation. I know I had a conversation quite recently with one of our partners around this, who was really interested in looking at different ways of commissioning. So, but thank you for all the work that's gone into it, it's looking really good.
Right, good. Thanks for that Fran, there was quite a bit in there. So yeah, priorities, partnerships, and then procurement and commissioning. Do you want to see if we can address some of that?
Thank you, and thanks for the acknowledgement of all the work. And I think I would like to really just emphasise, this isn't the council's plan, just as you've said Fran, and it is reflective of our partnership, it reflects what we've said we think should happen, but also what they've said. And we've got a very longstanding homeless prevention forum and our strategic delivery board, which is made up of representatives across voluntary sector, statutory services, housing providers and so forth. And we can certainly make that more explicit in future reporting, and I'm sure they would be delighted to come to future meetings. Likewise, if any members of the committee want to join us at the Homeless Prevention Forum, Douglas called in at the last one, which was a really good event. You're very welcome, and I know the partnership would love to see members there as well, so that is really appreciated, that support. Exactly what you've said really, we are trying to have more strategic conversations with the partnership as well so that we can identify together what are the key things, because there is an amalgamation of lots of activity, some of which is quite small, the bigger wins, but they make a difference. But others things that go to the heart of systemic change, which we do keep saying that's what we need to do to get on the front foot. And what we are doing with both advice from our partners who know Sheffield really well, but MHCLG, who we work with closely, other core cities, other experts, Homewards, who've brought a team of experts to help us as well, is to identify really those key activities. Because I think we still are in a place, and the partnership would acknowledge it, it, where we absolutely want to get on the front foot with the upstreaming of prevention, which is community-based, so rooted in what Sheffield requires, and it comes from them. And I think part of that is the work that Laura's really led on lived experience, and we now have employees who have lived experience of homelessness, we've done that quite deliberately and carefully, and it is reaping dividends, but we don't want that to be tokenistic, it has to be the start of something which transforms how we operate. So in terms of how we, I think we can stratify and prioritise within the action plan more clearly, and we can report that. In terms of the working with people in a different way, so the commissioning procurement side of things, of course, we have to follow the requirements around commissioning partnerships, sorry, commissioning, procurement and contract management, particularly when we're looking at the value level. So, but what we are doing is within that, is working with our commissioning colleagues across the council, in the context of the community strategy and on the board that looks at that, that we can actually be innovative and encourage local provision that suits local needs. As you all know, Fran, some of our providers are very local to Sheffield, but we have others that are more regional or national, but they do work with a particular understanding of Sheffield. So I think what we're trying to do is say we're honest as a partnership about what's good, what we really want to build on, but being reflective about what isn't so good and we might want to change, because if we don't, we'll keep focusing on crisis, rather than supporting people really at the point they need it. So I think what I would also say is that the individual members of the partnership as well have different goals, as well as that shared one, different aims and different reasons for being, and they need to work through their own governance and accountability structures as well to arrive at that common approach. So with over 60 organisations working with us, it's quite a big challenge, but one that reaps dividends for the city.
Thanks very much. A really good point to draw out about the partnerships there. Would just say, I did get to say a few opening words at the opening of the Homelessness Prevention Forum recently, and so it's in Victoria Hall, and the room was full, all the people had turned up to actually be part of this, so that was really encouraging. Wish I'd been able to stay there longer, but, I'd say. Go to councillor Williams, I think first, then back over this side.
Thank you, Chair, yeah, thanks for the report and the plan going forward. I'm really interested in the reasons for homelessness, and you state there's three are fairly consistent. It would be quite useful to actually get the numbers for each of those three categories, if that's possible. But also, I mean, in what, this is 1.21, the three reasons are asked to leave by a friend or and or family fleeing domestic abuse, which I think is fairly self-explanatory. The third one, loss of private rented housing, kind of hides a multitude of sins, that can be a number of different reasons why they've lost the right or the ability to rent in the private sector. I think, I don't know, I'm sure you've probably got another layer of information below that, it'd be quite nice to share that as well, just to give a steer to that point. You also, in 1.22, the last sentence is, recently presentations following eviction from the Home Office accommodation have become an emerging trend. I mean, how one-way is that? Do we have any conversation with the Home Office before these people unfortunately are evicted, to try and say, can you try something else? Because it's creating difficulties for us as a council, so I'll be interested in that. And the other point, on page 75, you've got a headline in the second paragraph, long-term rough sleeping reduced, but looking at the numbers, I can only see it going up. Am I misreading that, or am I just misunderstood what you're trying to prove with that? Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Yeah, over to Suzanne, Laura, for any thoughts on that.
Shall I start? Yeah, okay. So on the figures, we can absolutely provide them, we submit all of those to government, they are published, we've just completed our second quarter, which was reported at the end of September, we then have the verification before we start publishing locally any documents. But essentially, those three main reasons, they make up about 60% of all presentations that we have and duties that we accept, the other 40% are a mixture of things. In terms of private rented particularly, as you know, there is still what we call the no-fault eviction notice that can be given, Renters Reform Act has just got the sent, I believe? Yeah, so in the comments, so that will hopefully shortly be enacted, that will remove that particular grounds. However, that act brings both opportunities and challenges around some more protections, which are absolutely critical, but then may impact on how the market responds. So we will be working to monitor that and bring you further reports around that as well. And certainly, the main reason really is, for whatever reason I want the home back, I'll use this notice that I'm entitled to do. We do have a couple of things that we do around that to mitigate that, we have our Call Before You Serve service, where we encourage landlords to talk to us before they issue a notice, and where we can, we will stop that eviction happening, we will work with them to make sure that if we can, we help people to stay where they are. We also, in our private sector housing team, have our tenancy relations service, so they can work with us if there's any concerns around illegal harassment or eviction, illegal eviction of people, and we will work with the landlord and the tenant to address that. We also promote our private rented scheme, where we actively support people into a tenancy and give both guidance to the tenant and the landlord and tenancy support if needed, as well as a very important partner, we have Nomad in the City, who support people in private rented tenancies, particularly single people. So the fact is that it's low security in private rented, which means it is more difficult sometimes to sustain that, and it's no secret to you, you talked about the poverty issues earlier, Fran, the rents are higher, so there is more of an affordability issue for people on lower incomes. And we do, there are national issues as well, about local housing allowance, how that's determined, and how people who are reliant on benefit can sustain and access that sector. But it's really important for us, because as we know, we do not have enough social housing, but the only properties we will use are quality ones, where there's a fit and proper landlord, and they've passed all checks, so that is likely to continue to be a challenge. I won't go through it now, but the reasons around domestic abuse are well-known, with all of these things, the domestic abuse leaving friends and family, and private rented, we want to get on the prevention side, so we know more about what's happening. That fits with all of the work we're doing across the council about earlier help, so we're able to better identify where there might be a risk, both within particular communities and within particular cohorts or residents of cities, I don't like the word cohorts for people, people, yeah? So we'll certainly provide more information about the figures. Second? Rough sleeping, yeah, yeah. Laura can give greater clarification of that, but if it isn't clear, we had an increase in rough sleeping overall, which we were really unhappy about, because we've all worked so hard across the partnership to try and address that, and indeed address the root causes, particularly people who are new to the street. But one of the major challenges are people who have got a long-term history of being at risk of rough sleeping, and Laura and the team have done exemplary work, which is held up by MHCLG, to address that particular challenge locally, to work differently with our partners on that. And we are now having really good success on addressing, why does someone return to the street? It's so unsafe, it's really bad for their health and welfare, and life expectancy and so forth. And then you, Laura can expand on that further, you've also mentioned about Home Office leavers, about people leaving accommodation. The good thing is, the majority of those people have had a decision, and they now know what their status is, and they may well have received refugee status, so they can access services and benefits as any other citizen would do. However, because of that increase in the rate of decision-making, there are more people with that status than there would normally be in the city, which means more of them are presenting to homeless services and unable to access accommodation. Some people, we will owe a duty to, and we will provide them with temporary accommodation in the same way we would anyone else, and look at whether we owe them a full housing duty if we are unable to relieve that duty. For others, they're not considered in priority need, so they are at risk of rough sleeping, and we have seen that in the figures that are coming through. But we have taken a partnership approach with all of our partners who are particularly concerned, either with asylum and refugees, or homelessness and housing specifically, benefits, citizens' advice and so forth, to say, what else can we do in the city? And we have been putting in place some alternative accommodation, again with some grant that we've had from government, to provide alternatives for people in that situation. But we're also working with Home Office colleagues and their accommodation support providers about how can we get earlier prevention in reach really, to where people are living under Home Office accommodation. We are notified, as you'll be aware, there was an extension to 56 days notification, that has now been reduced back down to 28 days notice to the local authority. We are unable to share that information with partners at the moment, although we've been lobbying about that, because some of our partner organisations already have a close relationship with those individuals. So there's not an easy answer, but it's certainly, and I think this is what we're saying, we're having to adapt our action plan to the specific circumstances at the time. We couldn't sit down and agree one two years ago that is going to be wholly fit for purpose now.
Does that answer your question? Councillor Williams, yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Thanks. Just in terms of the rough sleepers, I think a message that, yeah, rough sleeper numbers are up, but the work done to reduce long-term rough sleeping has shown that those numbers have gone down, which is an important message. I guess it's also always important to stress to everyone now, rough sleeping is just the tip of the iceberg, most people who are homeless are not rough sleeping, there's a huge number of people hidden away there. Right, okay, some more questions, just in the interest of time, just ask, questions are meant to be fairly brief. Okay, thank you. Alison, councillor Norris?
Yeah, just following up on the part of the answer to Richard, I really welcome in the, from the additional MHCRG project funding, that you've got the targeted interventions for people leaving Home Office accommodation, and that's, you know, it's a relatively small amount of money, but it sounds like it's really well targeted, at people that have perhaps got refugee status, and they're not eligible for the Home Office accommodation anymore, but they need to access private rented, but there's huge barriers to doing that, and I really like that it's including peer-led initiatives, because you've obviously got a huge trust and credibility gap there. But I just wondered, given that that piece of work's going on, what are we planning, and that's, as I understand, that's just the one-off funding, is what are we planning to do to evaluate it and get the lessons from it, so that we can build it into our core work?
So that specific funding, it does look relatively small, but that's because we already fund a lot of other provision from the core grant allocation, so we've made a lot of investment, as Suzanne said, in terms of the workforce and additional capacity to make some assessments as well, specifically for people leaving Home Office accommodation. In terms of how we will evaluate some of the learning there, so as we progress through the contract and procurement of that service, we want to engage with the market in terms of what they think we should be specifying, and what the performance measures and outcomes should look like. So it will be very much co-produced with those specialist charities, which I think's really, really important, because through the partnership work that we've already done, we really understand those potentially nuanced challenges that we need to respond to appropriately. So it will be co-designed, and it will be evaluated, and learning will be taken from those agreed metrics and outcomes of the contract.
Okay, thanks very much. Shall go to councillor Turpin, and then councillor Hesey?
Thanks very much. It all looks really good, and so incredibly big and broad, and, you know, and it's a big problem. I was just, I wasn't going to ask this, because I was hoping you were going to drill down a little bit more into Richard's question earlier about the people with entrenched rough sleeping patterns, and kind of think, even though that is very much the minority of homeless people, it's probably like the most difficult group of people to, well, there probably isn't a permanent solution, you know, there's some of the reasons why that group of people are sleeping rough, can't be cured or fixed. And so I just wondered, well, 50% is like incredibly positive, I wondered if that 50% are sort of sticking with that new setup, and I wondered about the other 50, the remaining 50%, and I guess also if the government funding was a one-off or will continue, I just wondered if you can basically tell me that you're going to fix that issue next year or something.
Yep, if you'd like to dream on, Laura or Suzanne, do you want to rise to that challenge?
I'd love to rise to that challenge, I don't want anyone sleeping out on Sheffield streets, it feels just not appropriate in 2025. There are very complex requirements that some people have, and they have periods of being well, unable to maintain a home, and other times when they need more help. So we're working very closely with other statutory services as well, around safeguarding, care assessments, because often there's very underlying reasons that the housing really is, and it sounds quite cliched, is the presenting problem, rather than the fundamental one. We also recognise, and this is a lot, we've learned a lot through our Changing Futures work, about people who've got enduring needs, and that we've identified, so for example, a lot of the people who will go through cyclical periods of homelessness have got an acquired brain injury. That isn't going to go away, so we need to work with them about what works for them, and change the system to support people who are more vulnerable and have more complex requirements. We can't rely on bits of programme and project work, so the learning we want to do is the learning that will help us transform those whole systems, so that they're inclusive of everybody. Doesn't mean everyone gets the same service, but it's appropriate to meet those needs. And this is, there is actually a safeguarding conference in November that we're attending, which is specifically looking at interventions around homelessness and rough sleeping, and how we draw together adult care service and homeless services, and other health, health is another key one, there's been a lot of health inclusion work that we've been involved in. We're also learning from models elsewhere, so we do a lot of work with other authorities who might have gone further and faster than we have, to see what we can bring to Sheffield, as well as what we can do ourselves. So I think the answer is, I would love to say there'll never be anyone who spends a night out, that is the ambition, and it's in our home strategy. What I think we want to be assured of is that everyone had the opportunity to have that risk detected, we had in place a good set of services to support them, and we never give up, we, you know, we don't want anyone to feel that, because they may not have complied with things, a tenancy didn't work out, et cetera, they can still receive support to enable them. And I think one of the things that we're starting to look at is how we take that strength-based approach around the individual into our core home service offer, as well as into the supported housing sector. So again, that joins with approaches from adult social care, where we start with that person holistically about where they're at now, where they want to get to, and what we can do to enable them to live independently. Everyone's an individual, so don't go on about it, I feel quite passionate about it. One of the groups we know have been poorly served in the past are women, who are at risk of rough sleeping, and therefore Laura and the team are designing more bespoke services in response to those people with lived experience, what they're telling us about what works for them and what doesn't. That needs a quite different approach to the traditional one of quite big hostels that are predominantly for men in the city, so we are reshaping the whole supported housing offer as well. But again, this is the advantage we have now of looking at how we work with VCFs differently, to say, what innovation can you bring as well? And some of those might be quite bespoke and small services that are suitable, so we're really looking at how we tailor more appropriately for the individual, not just looking at people as a group. Someone isn't a rough sleeper, they're a person who've experienced rough sleeping.
Thank you very much, okay. In line of all, thanks councillor Hesey.
Thank you, I think you have answered.
I think you have answered my part of the question, but more specific. How many number the individual who are in rough sleep, they refuse to consistently working with partners such as police, are you sort of, and they are still in the same situation? Maybe they are drug addicted, any numbers?
So we don't collect specific data in terms of non-engagement, as Suzanne said, that we approach people that are rough sleeping very much with, we engage with you whenever that feels ready and it's very person-centred and focused. However, what I can say is that there is generally a number of people that continue to sleep rough although they have access to accommodation. And we know what that number is, it's a very specific group of people that we do very targeted interventions to, and that requires a very multi-service response in terms of the city ambassadors, the police, citizens' issues. So there is treatment services that actually undertake outreach with our teams to be able to have those joint conversations with individuals and try and to develop something more holistic that responds to their needs and requirements.
Right, thank you. Some really enlightening comments there to get into this. It looks like there's a lot of good work that's ongoing there. Shall we have a look at the recommendations, which you'll find on page 73? So essentially it's noting the progress of the Homelessness Prevention Action Plan, approving the revised plan that we see there, and then approve the distribution of the extra £840,000 to VCF sector groups. So you see this laid out there, so if I'm happy to approve that, yeah, getting nods around, so we'll take that as unanimous. Thank you very much, thank you Laura and Suzanne for presenting that. If we swap over people, we can move to the next item on the rent arrears recovery policy. So Dean, the other dean I think we've got, can we up? Would you like to come forward, settle and introduce yourselves for the webcast and then take us through the report briefly, it's on page 155, and go from there?
Thank you councillor Johnson, and good afternoon, I'm Daryl Smedley, Assistant Director for Strategy and Regulation.
Hello, my name's Dean Peaker, I'm the Service Manager in the Income Management and Financial Inclusion Team.
Okay, good afternoon and thank you for allowing us this time on the agenda today. The report presents the revised rent arrears recovery policy for consideration by the committee today. The policy has been reviewed in line with the three-year review period which was agreed at the Housing Policy Committee in 2022. The recommendations are set out on page 156 of your agenda packs and sets out what members should be looking to consider today. So this policy aims to minimise rent arrears and maximise income to the housing revenue account, ensuring the continued delivery of high-quality and affordable homes and landlord services. The updated policy maintains a strong focus on prevention and support, which aligns with the Regulator for Social Housing required outcomes as set out in the Tenancy Standard and aligns with our wider ethical approach to debt management in Sheffield. Our primary focus remains to stop tenants from falling into arrears in the first place and focusing on income maximisation and tenancy sustainment whilst taking robust action for people that won't pay. Engaging tenants meaningfully when developing or reviewing policies is critical to our values and ensures that people are at the heart of what we do. So in section four of the report, we set out the comprehensive engagement process that was undertaken, which engaged both tenants and external stakeholders who support tenants, which includes bodies such as Citizens Advice Sheffield, DWP, Shelter and Local Food Banks. I just wanted to touch on this around the consultation that ran for five weeks, acknowledging that we need to have a diverse approach to this. This combined online surveys, paper forms and eight separate in-person events around key community venues, including our older person and independent living, the older persons and independent living schemes, all of which were well-attended and gave tenants an opportunity to engage. In total, 344 responses were received with feedback highlighting the importance of clear communication, early support and consideration for vulnerable tenants. We welcomed all comments, including those that of customer experience nature. Some of these actions have been taken away by the service and fed directly into the business as usual service delivery. So I'll just hand over to Dean if there's anything else he wants to touch on and then we'll open that up to questions.
Yeah, thank you for the intro, Daryl. Yeah, so we brought the current policy, that's been running since 2022, back to committee back in that year, and at that time this had been updated extensively, following a period where the previous policy had not been reviewed for some time. The main focus was clearly to show how our commitment was to supporting customers where needed, whilst at the same time trying to protect the HRA by collecting income and charges as well as any arrears that were outstanding. The revised policy has helped to underpin how we would work and showed clearly what customers could expect from us. And this has helped us to improve performance over that time. Some of the highlights of this are shown in section 1.2 of the paper. We're committed to reviewing the policy every three years, which is what we have done. The updated policy continues with the same focus as before really, and so that has meant that there's really few changes to it. It hasn't really radically changed at all. Some of the main changes however are shown at section seven of the paper. Daryl's just mentioned consultation, this was carried out, we did involve tenants, customers, staff, internal teams and external partners. We asked a few basic questions about the service provided to rent and rent arrears collection, and we tried this in a number of different formats, as Daryl's just explained there. We tried, we made sure we not only did this online and via mail-out, but by also going out to in-person access points and trying to see people face-to-face and giving people an opportunity that way. 344 responses of which we got 129 that left a comment. The majority of these agreed with the approach of a new policy that was, as you say, underpinning the new policy, although there was less in agreement about the amount of support that was provided. So one of the major changes that we have made is the creation of a new support team, which is from within existing resources. And again, the further details of that are at section 4.8 of the paper. Support really is at the heart of everything we do, we understand how difficult it is for tenants and customers to manage the money in these difficult times. However, we do also have a responsibility to the HRA to ensure we collect income and arrears wherever we can for people that do not pay or don't engage with us. This has helped us to reduce arrears for the last two years after a period where we have been increasing consistently. A lot of external factors play a part in that and this, and at halfway point of this year, we're on track to reduce arrears further as well. So the recommendations of the paper are clear and I hope that you're able to consider and hopefully approve those.
Thank you very much for that, that's really good. Before I bring members in, just reflecting the fact that it's our tenants who pay practically all the money that comes in for the council to run council housing, and it's something that, you know, we should be proud of, but it goes to pay repairs and improvements and investment, maintenance and increasing the council housing stock, and that's all absolutely critical. You know, so it's our tenants who pay for it. Right, councillor Belbin, did you want to come in on your question?
Thank you. Well, first of all, apologies if I missed it, but again, what came up with tenants at the meeting, we have them on Monday, was wondering about some of the numbers in here and the fact that it looks like nearly half our tenants have been in rent arrears to some extent. And I think we were hoping just to get a bit of a picture of, you know, if they've just been a week in arrears or whatever, and what proportion are in what we might call substantial rent arrears, I suppose is part of the question, because the numbers look quite big. So that was the first question, and another point as well, do you want to respond to that one first?
Thank you for that question councillor Belbin. And firstly, I'd just like to say out and thanks to members and to tenants who effort engaging in that forum, in tenants' voices matter, I think we've heard a few questions previously, it's really important to hear tenant voice coming through into the committee. So it's really welcome that we've got a question there challenging and wanting some clear steer on that. I'll pass on to Dean for a specific answer, if that's all right?
Yeah, that's fine. So we do scrutinise arrears very closely, as you would imagine, we have lots of data on about people that are in arrears and we put them into bandings. So you're correct, at the end of 24/25, we had 43% of our tenants that were classes in arrears, which is 16,298. Now, that figure includes everybody who at the first Monday in April owed a penny or more, okay? So I mentioned 43% were in arrears, 24% of all our, of all our tenants, that's over half of that figure then, owed between a penny and two weeks times their net rent. Now, there's a number of reasons why people have got very low level arrears. So for example, people may pay their rent every week, but because the method of payment that they use, the credit may not go on to the following week, that's very, very common. So if you pay at a post office on a Thursday or a Friday, for example, at the end of the week, your account will show in arrears, because the payment doesn't come on the account till Monday or Tuesday the following week. So 24% of that 43 owed under two weeks arrears. The others, I have the information for the bandings, we have bandings at 0 to 2, 3 to 4, 4 to 8 and so on and so on. All of the bandings are reducing. So the highest banding at 52 weeks plus, you might think that's a lot of arrears, it depends on what your net rent is, because obviously a lot of people are still on housing benefits, it's based on the net rent. So that figure, for example, came down from 342 to 264 last year, and that's only 0.7%, 0.71% of all our tenancies. So we accept that the numbers are too high, we accept that current arrears are higher than we want them to be and we are working, that is reducing now. The number of tenants in arrears is high, there's a lot of external factors to that, a lot of people have got quite low level arrears as well, the big majority of all our tenants are in very low level arrears and we are working, the trend is clear that they are all reducing across the board and we expect that to continue.
Thank you, I think that'll be really helpful. I know members of, tenants who came to that meeting watching on this committee, so I think that'll be really helpful information for them to reflect on. The other point I had, if that's all right, was again, in response to some of the comments in the consultation, which, quite a lot of those comments do focus on where we have vulnerable tenants or where tenants, you know, may be struggling to understand the information that we send out, et cetera. I know we are doing the work as well on vulnerable customers, which this will feed into, but I wanted to flag up another initiative through the Poverty Truth Commission, which is the Brown Envelope Code, and I think that's really helpful in thinking around how we're communicating with tenants and the principles within that or around, yes, being clear and not trying to frighten people, but putting information in clear ways that they can respond to, helping them to really understand timelines, but above all, being kind and understanding that, you know, we don't need to send threatening letters. We absolutely want to get on top of rent arrears, you're quite right to say councillor Johnson, that this, you know, this is how we make money that supports our housing, but we can still be kind to people when they're getting into debt. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Belbin, and for that feedback, which I've received when developing the vulnerability policy with colleague Matt Sutton as well. And just for an update on that, really pleasantly, we had a really good in-person session yesterday evening with a set of tenants that were involved in that, in developing on the vulnerability of policy as well. So we talked about that and what that will offer for us moving forward and now that will support all of our services, including income management team around how we engage with tenants routinely and what the benefits will be for tenants that they will feel when we've got those policies, procedures and skilling up the workforce to better support the needs of tenants also.
Yeah, I was just going to add a quick point really on support. So support and identifying vulnerable tenants and then trying to support those in a tailored way, we really do feel that's at the heart of everything we try to do. We are never going to please and be able to do that for all our tenants, we've got 38,000 tenancies that are let, and it's difficult to do that for everybody, but we try to do that. Not everybody engages with us, but where people do engage and where there is a way forward, whether that's internal support, external support, whatever that may be, we'll look to provide that wherever we possibly can.
Thanks very much. You talked about the external influences and of course recognise we're still living in a city of a huge poverty and disadvantage for a lot of people. So thanks for that. Just on the figures that you referred to, I wonder if you'd be helpful if you could circulate those to members of the committee? There's some quite important detail in there, but I think it'd be good for us to have that understanding. Okay, can I go this side? If I can bring in councillor Levery, just because he hasn't spoken yet. After you.
Thanks, Chair. I have some life concerns at the moment with this, I'm dealing with a case in my ward, elderly couple in their 80s who are on direct debit and are in arrears and didn't know from 2018, when they were just below the threshold for rent support. And the assumption was made that they are above that threshold now and therefore for the last seven years have been in arrears. So they've had an arrears demand payment made and they were told that if they can find out when they cross the threshold, that will be amended. Now, they don't have internet, they don't have access to the bank accounts, they just get monthly statements. They didn't want to do that and they've agreed a payment plan, but as soon as that happened, they also had a council tax support demand because their council tax payments, when the council tax support arrangements changed into 2019, were not amended. So they now have a bill for council tax running into hundreds of pounds. Now, we should be able to assess these sorts of people who are on the system and then approach it differently because they pay by direct debit. We shouldn't be have them facing a bill of over a thousand pound in council tax arrears and rent payments when they didn't know. And I think that's one lesson that he's learning here today, much more careful looking at people who aren't on benefits but have, are retired, have a small, have not a lot of money and they're on the balance and the council tax threshold and not go straight in and assume that they're going to have to pay a huge amount of money. And my big question is, how many people are like that? And secondly, why was nothing done in 2019 for those people who were on council tax support to adjust their payments when the council tax system changed? And why are they now having to recover it? Thank you.
Thanks for flagging that, councillor Levery, that's quite an important point. I think, I guess you're talking about a housing benefit decision that's going recently. Is it useful to address that because that can destabilise rent accounts quite rapidly, can't it? Are you able to give a response to councillor Levery?
Thank you councillor Johnson, and for the question councillor Levery. Obviously, I will start by saying more than happy to talk to you outside of this meeting. If there's something on a specific case that we can obviously discuss, that's, we can take that away and make sure that we look into that specific case. And just in respect of council tax specifically, we do work closely with council tax in many ways, but obviously we would need to take the council tax issues as well away and referring to the correct teams within the council, which we are more than willing to do, and I'm sure Dean will take that away. Dean, do you want to just come in on specific cases?
Yeah, I think it's difficult without knowing the specific details. It sounds very unusual to me, I have to say, if we're talking about a potential change in benefit going back a number of years that we were not aware of. That sounds, I'm not saying it doesn't happen, but it sounds unusual, but without the specific details of the case, I don't, I can't confirm what the actions are or what the reasons are for that. Clearly, it sounds like it's benefits because it's across both rent and council tax. Very happy to have a look at the account afterwards, have a discussion afterwards and try and get to the bottom of what has happened there and find some answers for you.
Yeah, okay, I mean, we have, I have helped them and I've dealt with the team and they're paying the settlement on the council tax in full, but they shouldn't be in that position. That's the point. And my worry is, how many other people in similar circumstances, close to the threshold, are likely to be getting this sort of demand? Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Bring in James Clark, the director.
Noted, and thank you for helping and advocating for your constituent on this issue. We will put it up outside the meeting, but I think the point you're making, and it's the right point to make, and we'll take this away, is we need to take the learning from this case, don't we councillor Levery? So we will commit to do that, definitely.
Thanks. I think it's actually really good news that these cases that were quite common a few years ago are now less common, but yeah, it'd be good to take that one up and just have a look at what the learning is there and really about the relationship between housing staff and benefit staff who are not within the housing service but where there's obviously a huge overlap there. So that'd be great, thank you very much. Thanks for flagging that up councillor Levery. Shall we go back this side, councillor Dwyer, will you want to ask something and then we'll come back over to this side?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And it was linked, I suppose, to the last item, but then also some of councillor Belbin's comments. So on the approach to recovering arrears by external organisations, and making sure, it talks about ethically procuring that, and making sure, how do we make sure that that is done in a way that's in line with how we would do it as an organisation? So we don't push people into poverty and homelessness, but then comes back, I would argue, in a more expensive way down the line for the council than the outstanding debts likely to be.
Can I just clarify, what point in the paper are you looking at councillor Dwyer?
Yes, I might have misunderstood this, but that's great. So it was, we'll take an ethical approach to recovering arrears, and one way obviously is that you could go through the full recovery process where you can put it out to tender, and you get an amount of money. Oh, sorry, on page two point, two point nine, on page one five eight of the full booklet.
I just clarify, two point, two point nine, on page one hundred and fifty-eight, okay. We will take an ethical approach to recovering arrears, ensuring personal circumstances are considered in all cases. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and the comment is around external partners that are involved in our work.
Yeah, the answer is we don't do that. That probably answers and clarifies and means we're doing it the right way, yeah.
The only external partners that will get involved in debt recovery, as far as we're concerned, is for former tenants. So if you're a current tenant, there's no, we manage that internally within my income management team. For former tenants that have left a property and have outstanding arrears, we will try to recover that debt internally. Again, we have an internal former tenants team that will try to do that, and are very, very successful with that. But if we cannot recover, then we will refer to debt collecting agencies, not bailiffs, just to be clear, not bailiffs, but debt collecting agencies. This is a contract that we've agreed as a council. We apply them across a number of different services within the council, and there are appropriate agreements in place about how they will carry out that work on our behalf. So we have a close relationship with the three DCAs that we work with in the income management team. And if we, for example, identify a vulnerability or an issue with how that DCA has potentially tried to collect that debt, then we will recover that debt and bring that back in house straight away. It happens very rarely, but we do have sometimes, former tenants will contact us to say a debt collecting agency has knocked on the door, they didn't like it, or they didn't like a letter that the debt collecting agency had sent out, and then we would return that back in house and collect that back in house. But they have to adhere to agreements that we've made within those contracts that were, you know, that are let at the time when contracts are let. So they do have, they should be considerate, they understand vulnerabilities and equalities and inclusivity, and deal with customers in that way. And they do for the vast majority of cases that they manage on our behalf.
Yeah, thank you, that's great.
Yep, thank you very much, okay. Go back this side councillor Turpin.
Perfect, because this is what I was going to ask about as well. And I was with a constituent. So the rent arrears, he had some council tax arrears. And council tax arrears of about three hundred pounds from living in a shared house with two other people, who, you know, have not lived in the house for god knows two years. At least one of those people doesn't even live in Sheffield anymore. The council tax was in his name. It's been passed to debt collectors by the council, the debt collector has escalated that three hundred pounds to eight hundred and sixty-five pounds. And I was actually with him when he was on the phone to them, and the guy on the other end of the phone was threatening him, pay us at two hundred and fifty pounds by the end of today, or the bailiffs are coming round and they will take your things. And he is working on universal credits. It's a lot of money. He managed to get the money together to pay that that day. And the following day was, you've got three days to pay the balance, or the bailiffs are coming round and they will break down your door and they will take your things. I was with him when he received that phone call. And I just wonder if you actually know what the debt collectors are saying to people.
Can we just clarify, it's a really important case study, but that was council tax, not rent arrears, wasn't it? And do we actually know whether the call was from a member of council staff or a debt collection company?
It was from a debt collection company, but as we've just heard, the council has a council-wide contract with a debt collection company, so I find it likely that it's the same company.
Or one of three, yeah. Yeah, just useful to clarify that, so that we can get a meaningful response to that. What can we say?
Sorry, I'll turn myself off, apologies. Thanks for that question councillor Turpin. I think what we've heard loud and clear is some general concerns around debt collection and the use of external bodies to do that. So I think it's important that we note that, and I think and we take that back away as officers with other officers in the council, and think about how we come back and respond. Because just being honest about it, I can't really respond to an individual case in that sense. But clearly, if members are hearing this from their constituents, then that's something that we need to hear as a council, not just as individual services, as you say.
Can I, just a very quick point, the DCAs are not allowed to increase the debt on any rent arrears that they collect on our behalf. So as Daryl says, we're talking about council tax there, and I'm not absolutely clear what the agreements are they have with their DCAs or bailiff arrangements. But certainly, for former tenancy rent arrears, there is no debt is ever increased by any amount because we're collecting it via a DCA. That just doesn't happen, at all, it's never happened. But we will, as Daryl said, we'll try and come back with some information about how council tax is being recovered.
Maybe this is something I could follow up with whoever is appropriate, the version of you in the council tax team, later on.
I think that'll be helpful to get the specifics to the right person. What we do know is that the regime for enforcement of council tax is its own regime in law. So Frank, councillor Belbin, did you want to come in on that specific point? I've not forgotten it well.
Yeah, just very quickly, because I was at Citizens by Sheffield Staff and Bundray Conference yesterday, and the very same point was made about one particular agency, so I will follow that up with you afterwards. And that was quite a general point rather than the specific case, so.
Comment on that?
Thank you councillor Belbin. Yeah, I think, just for absolute clarity, as Dean said, we don't use bailiffs. We can't speak on behalf of council tax and their procedures, but we do use debt collection agencies. And just to reiterate that, there's no compounding of charges in respect to that. So that's where our approaches are different with tenants. So I think that's probably the lines of clarity in that respect, but fully appreciating this is a wider council issue that affects residents across Sheffield.
Okay, just a short comment from councillor Turpin?
Sure. And I'm just wondering, you know, if you say that bailiffs are not used, how sure you are that the operatives from the debt collection agencies are not threatening individuals with bailiffs in order to get the money out of them?
As I said, we come back to our agreements that we have within the housing service for collecting for the tenancy rent arrears, where we've made it very clear that that doesn't happen. We get customer feedback from former tenants who will contact us when they've had contact by a DCA, because a lot of people think that it's a scam, they don't believe that a DCA is actually trying to collect the debt. So that's how we would normally get feedback from customers. I am not saying, in all my years in the income management team, I've never had a customer unhappy with how a DCA has tried to collect their debt. There has been a very, 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 very small number of examples where a customer has been unhappy with how the DCA has tried to collect that debt, and we have immediately pulled that debt back and communicated directly with the customer. But as I said, the agreements around not compounding the debt, and not even mentioning the bailiff, not threatening the bailiff, not using the bailiff, is very clear in the arrangements that we have in the agreements. And we do constantly meet our DCAs as a housing service, from my service, and we will review the contracts and the agreements and how things are working with them. And I think that's as good an answer I can give you really, but we will, you know, talk to council tax about their recovery methods.
Yeah, and just a final point on that, I think what we can do is take away the learning from what we've heard today. Think about how we engage the DCAs in that review, and consider how we might build in some additional assurances and get in resident voice on what that feels like for them as well, which would be really useful for us to give us assurance and yourselves assurance that it is delivering what we're saying it delivers. So we will take that as well as some learning. Thank you.
Very well, very quickly.
I wonder if this is something where, we've discussed it quite a bit, particularly in housing, about the concept of one council. And really, you know, for an individual, whether it's council tax debt or rent arrears, it's just debt, and that person should be receiving the same service, for whatever reason, they owe money to the council.
Is that something that you could take away?
Yeah, thanks for that comment councillor Turpin. Yeah, we'll take that away with the other point. Thank you.
Thanks, yeah. Just on a general point, there's a lot of misconception about bailiffs and what that means. It's often used loosely in lots of different ways. Generally speaking, if someone threatens to break down your door, that's a police matter, unless you're sure that they've actually got the authority of a proper court to do that. However, there we are, let's move on. Councillor Williams, you've been very patient.
Thank you Chair. On page one hundred and fifty-seven, you've got one point two, you have a table, which, if I'm reading it the way I read it, doesn't look great. What I'm interpreting this as is that we've got nearly ten million pounds worth of tenants' arrears. A staggering number of tenants in arrears, you've done some explanation on that. But I think it would be quite useful to actually have the historical data on that. How far does that go back? And how realistic is it that we're ever going to get that ten million pounds? Concern me. I have, and I'm old enough to recognise when you don't know something you should ask. What is Yorkshire Water Support?
Okay, so I can answer that one to your questions. So we have data going back, I would say, twenty-five years. Arrears, current tenancy arrears and former tenancy arrears going back a long, long time, so we can provide that. I think the reason for the table in one point two was to try and reflect the three years since the last policy was updated in 2022. Yes, the arrears are not massively lower than that, they did increase the following two years up to ten point, well, sorry, the following year up to ten point two, and then they've come down to ten point one and then to nine point eight five, and we will expect that to reduce again this year. So we're now starting to see a pattern which is linked undoubtedly to, there has been external factors that have affected that. And we're coming out of that now with, you know, one of the main issues there is that universal credit and the migration of the universal credit, people being forced onto universal credit. That will end at the end of twenty-five, twenty-six, so we'll then introduce a natural movement thereon. So that will help us to contain arrears more. So we can happily provide, as I suggested with the banding, some information on levels of arrears going back a few years, you know, after the meeting for the minutes. If that's what you would like, that's absolutely fine. The second part of the question was Yorkshire Water Support, ever so sorry. So we have made an industry in my team of trying to support people financially, and trying to find them funding where we possibly can. So we access things like the DHP, we've got an internal hardship fund, we refer people to the household support fund. One of the massive parts of that is Yorkshire Water Support. So the big majority of all our customers have got Yorkshire Water as their water provider. There's a small number around the Crystal Peaks area that are still seven to rent, about three thousand, but the vast majority are Yorkshire Water. And forgive me if you know this already, but most tenants will have their water rates included with their weekly rent. So we have an agreement with Yorkshire Water that we collect the water charges on their behalf. So the water charges are on the weekly rent, and in working with Yorkshire Water, they have provided a support scheme which says that depending on your circumstances, on your household and your financial makeup, you may be eligible to reduce those water charges. So a very good example is your water charge is maybe eighteen pounds a week. Yorkshire Water would, well, we would, sorry, identify the household makeup and the financial income of that household, and if they're eligible for Yorkshire Water Support Scheme, we'll do the claim and we'll send it off to Yorkshire Water, and they will reduce those charges from maybe eighteen pounds a week down to seven pounds a week. And we've now got thousands, and we've got about fifteen thousand people claiming Yorkshire Water Support because we've made an industry of it. So the amounts in the table there reflect the annual reduction in water charges for our customers, which were three and a half million pounds last year. We're already at four million pounds, and we're only halfway through this year. So Yorkshire Water have been very supportive, we have made sure that we tackle, you know, we approach this and look at this for all of our tenants that we're talking to, to see if they're eligible. Thousands are, there are more that we're still going to work through as we talk to them. But that just shows you the financial support and the reduction in charges on the rent accounts via that support being awarded.
Sorry, thank you. So if there was no Yorkshire Water Support, let's take twenty-four, twenty-five of three point five plus million, would that go back on to the arrears?
We would be expecting our tenants to pay it. So that three point five million pounds is a reduction in their water charges, not the net rent charges, their water charges that we collect on rent accounts. So we basically supported our tenants to have three point five million pounds more in their pocket by not having to pay that amount in water charges for that year. But if Yorkshire Water pulled that scheme, then those tenants, instead of paying seven pounds a week in the example I've just given, their water rates would go back up to eighteen pounds a week, or whatever the appropriate amount is. So that's what we're.
So that technically could increase arrears?
Yes, it could, it could. It's undoubted, the work that we do is trying to put money in people's pockets, you know, maximising benefits, Yorkshire Water Support, things like that, because that all helps people to pay their other bills and debts, including rent arrears, yes.
And then on the lower two rows, my Chair, you could read that as saying actually the council is doing less to get the arrears back, because the activities come down. I'm not suggesting that we should be chasing people out of their homes, but is that a fair assumption? That we're currently doing less?
James, do you want to? Can I respond to that Chair? Yeah, it's a really good point, I was going to reference this at the end. I think it's the opposite with respect. So the best income collection services in the country have achieved a sweet spot of declining evictions and kind of other formal action, and increasing collection and lower arrears. And what you see here is, you know, not a huge reduction in tenant arrears, but certainly a reduction in the last couple of years, which is really positive, whilst also sustaining a reduction in NSPs and evictions. And that is an indicator for me that the team is getting better at intervening earlier and providing support, not least because it's far easier to collect arrears for sitting tenants than it is for former tenants. So it's not good for income collection if we evict people. We have to sometimes, but it's much better to sustain tenancies, because then we've got a better chance of collecting income, as well as it obviously being better for the household. So I think that's how we should read it. And I think the committee should be ambitious on this, in terms of wanting to see that number continue to reduce, and as well as the kind of performance of the arrears continuing to improve over time.
Thank you. I'm sure it's come back. Yeah, can we just say, yeah, evictions are not a good outcome case. Getting money in from Yorkshire Water's hardship fund is a good thing, and probably just worth reminding us that, yeah, that is available to anyone who's a Yorkshire Water customer. But the scale of the money coming in reflects my earlier point about just the number of people we've got living in our homes, who are living in poverty, as evidenced by the fact that Yorkshire Water will grant those sources there. Do you want to come back in though, Richard?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Yeah, and on page one hundred and seventy-one, under item three, recovering debt arrears, you talk about first stage process. My concern is that as you work through it, there is, you will, it says we will include a warning that you can take legal action when four weeks' rent is owed, and then we expect the balance out standard to be paid in full. For a lot of very vulnerable people, four weeks' rent is too far for them, they, you know, it's a lot of money for them, and that kind of two things, they almost need to be warned earlier, if that makes sense, because a lot of people just can't get four weeks' rent suddenly, and you're pushing people into these payday loans, that type of thing, that you really don't want them to be going into, just out of concern.
Yeah, so the four weeks is, so the policy sets out what we can do and what we should be doing when arrears reach certain stages. In practice, we will try and contact anybody who's missed two weeks' rent. That's what we do now. So we do, the policy states though, because that's when we can start serving a notice seeking possession if we wanted to, between, you know, or a start warning of a notice seeking possession to then serve it at week six. But our intervention, our early intervention starts at week two. So if somebody misses two weeks' rent, then we will be trying to contact them to intervene. As James mentioned earlier, it's all around early intervention and prevention to try and avoid those. As James mentioned earlier, it's all around early intervention and prevention to try and avoid those arrears, even getting to four weeks. But this is not a procedure manual. So you'll probably see other policies that have, you know, got a lot more detail in there. This is an overarching statement of how this underpins our approach to arrears recovery work. So it isn't a procedure manual. Our procedure manual, if you ever wanted to have a look at that, it's very lengthy, will talk about early intervention from week one, week two.
Is that okay? Just constantly, we have got two more items after this. Councillor Leary, did you want to come in for a short thing on this topic?
Yes, please. Just on the Yorkshire Water Support Scheme, do tenants know whether they're on the scheme or not and how do they qualify?
So Yorkshire Water like the responsibility, have told us they want the responsibility of advertising that, communicating that, promoting that. They have given us, or we've got their agreement when we're talking to customers, to talk about Yorkshire Water Support and see whether people are eligible for it. But they don't, they have not given us authority to communicate that from us because it's their scheme. It's their scheme. So they're the ones that want to communicate that and want to promote that scheme. We just do it on a case by case basis. We've identified customers that are eligible and we will, you know, when talking to customers, talk about Yorkshire Water Scheme. And as you say, we've got 15,000 people claiming that in Sheffield now of our tenants, which is fantastic achievement. But they've got the responsibility for promoting that. And the eligibility is around household income and makeup. Again, we've got the details of that. I could make a figure up. I think I know what it is, but I don't want to quote the figure in case I'm not quite accurate. But it's around how many people in the household and what the income of that household is, decides whether they're eligible. And then there is an amount that they will reduce the water charges down to accordingly. If the water charges that somebody's paying are already very low, you know, your water charges may already only be £7 a week, for example. There's no, and Yorkshire Water are often to reduce it to seven, there's no reason to make a claim there. But we do have some water rates that are quite high across the city in different properties. And when we identify that, talking to tenants, it's just part of our support package to try and claim Yorkshire Water Support on their behalf.
Thanks for that, Chair. That's okay. Haven't forgotten councillor Asane, still there, I think, for the last.
Thank you, Chair. My question is regarding legal action. You know, the council tax, they got practice when they issue someone, magistrate court summons, and there is a legal fee attached, even though an individual willing to pay loomsum and still they charge the fee, legal fee, even the before date, before hearing. Is the same practice for the tenant arrears or is it different?
So for secure tenants, the first, there's three legal recovery stages, which is a notice seeking possession, there's a possession application for a possession claim in court, which would then potentially lead on to an eviction. So there are three different stages. If we serve a notice seeking possession, there's no cost to the tenant for that. That's the first stage. That's warning a tenant that further action can commence if they don't pay the rent and reduce the arrears. So the next stage, if people do continue to not pay the rent and arrears continue to increase and they're not engaging, we can apply to court for a possession order. Okay? It's at that point when we apply for court that costs are then incurred. There's a cost to going to court. The court have been increasing these annually for the last few years. They're not cheap. They are between £400 and £500, the costs. So when we go to court on a possession claim, we will ask the court to award the costs against the tenant. And then they will be, if that's granted by the district judge, then they are put onto the tenant's rent account as additional arrears. So that's why it's all, we will try and avoid that wherever we possibly can because, and that's a big factor in making a decision on whether or not we apply for a possession hearing, because we know that those court costs are there. If there are, sometimes the court won't agree with the court costs for whatever reason, but the vast majority of cases, we do get the court costs because the court will see that we are within our rights and we've done everything that we can. And we have made the right decision by applying to court, but that's when the court costs are incurred. If we apply for a warrant thereafter, which is an eviction to evict somebody, there's a £130 warrant fee, which is also, we would add back to the tenant's rent account and that would increase their arrears by that £130 as well.
If he's willing to pay beforehand, then it's going to be reduced. So still, you're going to charge.
Well, everything we do is to try and ask somebody to pay beforehand. Once we have made the application to court and the hearing has been listed, the court fees are then incurred already. If a tenant would then come to us and offer to pay the court, sorry, pay the arrears off, we obviously were never going to refuse a payment. But we may still, the court hearing has already been incurred, the hearing has been set, we would still go to court, we'd ask to adjourn the hearing. We wouldn't ask for a possession order on anybody who's cleared the account, but we would still ask for those costs to be paid by the tenant because we've incurred the costs. And it's only after we've done that that they then clear the rent account. So that's the general approach.
Is that okay? Try and make the short call, but yes.
I'm sorry, but it must have been less than 10 minutes ago when you said that arrears would never be increased. And clearly, you know, they are being increased with court costs. They it just seems incredibly hypocritical to say that, oh, we'll never put what they owe up and then obviously you do.
I do, apologies councillor Turpin. I was talking about DCAs. I thought we were talking about using the use of DCAs at that time, which my comments are absolutely accurate. There are court costs for possession hearings and for warrants to be applied for, that the fees that we have to pay to the court and we pass those over to, or we ask the court to agree to pass those over to the customers. So I'm sorry if that was slightly confusing.
So at what point do those costs get added, before or after the debt is handed to a DCA?
The full debt would be passed to the DCA, which would include court costs, yes.
Just wondering if you're talking across purposes there because you went to about the county court, you're into about people who are currently in the tenancies whereas with the debt collection agencies, I think you only use those for former tenancy arrears where people aren't living there. So two completely different situations.
If you've got a possession on a tenant, yes, the costs are on the rent account that would be added. If that tenant then quits or is evicted or quits the tenancy and becomes a former tenant, then the court costs that were added on whilst they were still a current tenant is still part of their arrears. And if we can't collect that debt, we would pass that whole debt to the DCA. That's not the DCA increasing the value of it. That's because the costs were already on when the tenant was already.
I just think that's really difficult for people who can't afford to pay the bill in the first place. Like my constituent whose £300 bill was almost tripled. And, you know, that's not occurring council. I don't think we really dug into this when we were discussing this policy in the briefing sessions. I don't remember doing that, although it's fair to say that it may have been a session that I missed.
Let's just check this in because going back, that wasn't about rent arrears, was it? And there's all sorts of different debts which work in different ways. Okay, right. Shall we sort of park this one, take this? I think there's some genuine questions there, but maybe we should take those outside this room because this is just about the rent arrears issues here. Can I just check? No one else had their hands up. I know we've moved out. All right. Frank, councillor Elbin, you've got something?
I didn't, Chair, but if you're going to move to the recommendations, I do have an issue about recommendation C. Do you want me to raise that now?
Yes, you want to say what that is, yeah.
It's just that, if you recall, at the last committee, we had a bit of an issue around the commissioning of the psychology surveys and we had a bit of discussion around delegating delegated decisions at that point. And I did have a bit of discussion with the monitoring officer about that. Councillor Turpin was copied into that discussion. And we talked there about using phrases like significant or controversial changes. And I think the monitoring officer replied then that as a general point, I am not in favour of delegations being defined by things such as significant as it leads to a lack of clarity and can be very subjective. So I was a bit concerned to see it and using, I'm not against at all the recommendation of delegating this to the officer, by the way. It's just a phrasing that I worry is a bit unspecific. Thank you.
I might just ask, she was coming up. I have to say, I agree. It's a bit of a circular situation, isn't it? So we could say we drop that unless anyone disagrees or she advises otherwise.
Yeah, thank you for your points. I mean, on that one there, I think, I think because we've said that it's just about sort of minor amendments. And I did actually pass this by the monitoring officer as well when I was discussing this and he was quite happy with, obviously. I think it's just that unless it's something that's going to be substantive, I suppose that's the word essentially, which perhaps would have been, thinking about it, would have perhaps been a better word. But if it's substantive, then it would obviously come about. But if it's just de minimis and minus, then it obviously, it just delegates to the officers. It just means it just doesn't take up your time with minor things that you don't really need it to. So I would suggest that you perhaps change that to substantive if significant isn't the word that the monitoring officer proposes.
Let's come back to that. I mean, I have to say, I wanted to agree with councillor Elbin there, but James, you want to come in on something?
Just to say, we're happy to do whatever the committee wants on this. I think it does relate in part to the exchange at the beginning that councillor Turpin started off around the work programme. There are quite a lot of policies that were asking the committee to agree with a two or three year review cycle. Often the review results in little or no changes, but under the current delegations, they still need to come back to committee. So there's a choice here, I think, for the committee around, is that an appropriate use of your time where there are no or very minor changes? Or would you still like it to come for visibility and the opportunity to have the sort of discussion that we've had today? So I'm comfortable with including it or not including it or changing the word.
So let's just see where we are. I mean, I absolutely agree that this is a valid point. And I think, personally, I think I'd agree if we're saying that if there's any changes to policy, then it should come back to the committee, partly because anticipating major changes, if necessary, that could be done. But fundamentally, this is a policy that governs those rare situations where, as a council, we decide to evict someone from their home. And so it does, on some occasions, have very serious consequences. And I think members here ought to know and have sight and real responsibility for that. So councillor Elbin, if you were proposing we just leave out part C?
Yeah, I think my reflection would be that the changes at this time were fairly minor, to be honest. They included introductory tenancies was the main change, I think, wasn't it? But we've actually had quite a good discussion, I think, that's also enabled members to bring in cases where, you know, that's where perhaps we've not followed the policy as well as we should. And that feels to me like quite a useful use of the committee's time.
Sorry, I was just checking that. Are we saying leave somebody or just take it out altogether? Leave out the whole of C, even if it's simpler? I mean, yes, okay. So I think, councillor Turner, councillor Williams on that point?
Yeah, it is on this point. I think, given that it's a three year cycle, that we should be reviewing policies because it talks about significant or controversial, but equally minor is a totally subjective terminology as well. So I think that, to me, it makes sense that all policy should be reviewed through this committee on a three year cycle. And, you know, if there's no changes and the officers give a reasonable explanation why there's no changes and that policy could be reviewed in 10 minutes, you know, I think it's one of the duties of this committee to review the policies.
So I think we're all on the same page here. So if I take councillor Elbin's proposal to simply drop paragraph C and, Richard, I'll take councillor Limms to second that. And shall we just deal with that first of all? I don't see anyone opposing that. Is everyone happy with that? Quick show of hands. So we'll leave out C there. Thank you very much.
So was that, could I just have a?
I think that's unanimous. Yeah, yeah. We can say that's unanimous to leave out recommendation C. And then secondly, can just check on A. So it says, it's a bit of a drafting thing. It says recommended to consider the outcome of the tenant consultation, which is what we have been doing. Would it be appropriate to say we'll note the outcome of the tenant consultation? Is everyone happy with that? To recognise the tenant consultation, we've had a look at that. And then just leave out the rest of that sentence, otherwise it doesn't make sense. Is that okay? So with those revised recommendations, and we'll not quibble about B. With those revised ones, is everyone happy essentially to approve the changes that are posed in the rent arrears recovery policy? Again, quick show, you want to, yeah.
I'm really, I'm not super happy about adding bills on to the people who are least able to pay them. And I feel like it's a bit late to do much about it. But the line says we may pass those charges on to people at the point of seeking some sort of court injunction. And I just, it doesn't feel that clear to me. And I would suggest that, like, most people who are eight weeks in arrears are in arrears because they haven't got the money to pay it. And, you know, we've had homelessness here before. Last meeting, we had a mental health report. And to be putting further financial burden on to people who haven't got the money to pay their rent is, it just doesn't really appeal to me.
Okay, let's just note that. Councillor Leary, did you want to say something on that before we go to the recommendations? No, sorry. Yes, yes. Yeah, so we're at the recommendations. Not sure what the site called. I mean, we've gone over this a bit, you know, just either vote for or against or abstain, I suppose. It doesn't necessarily matter. Is there anything else to say on that or shall we just go to the recommendation disposed with? Do you want to say anything on that? No, okay. Well, yeah. Well, let's just, let's just go through what we've actually got left on the recommendations. So A simply becomes to note the outcome of a tenant consultation. Quick show of hands on that. Does everyone have to note the outcome of the tenant's consultation? Yep, so we're okay with part A. That's unanimous. And then part B is noting the recommended changes and approving the revised rent arrears recovery policy in the form attached to appendix B. So I think we can support that. That's everyone. Yeah, sorry. Just a point, are we allowed to vote in parts on recommendations? We are? Okay, thank you. Yeah, and we often tweak those a bit. So just check, councillor Limms, you were voting for that, weren't you? Yep, okay. Councillor Turpin, how did you want your vote recorded? Okay, all right. So this is just part B. So we're looking at abstain. Yeah, yeah. That's okay. So overall, the new policy is approved, which is the important decision of the day with that. Again, thanks. Actually, it's been a really useful discussion. Dean and Daryl, thanks for answering and delving into more depth on those things there. And yeah, we'll, yeah, go for that. Thank you very much. Right, okay. So we've got two more items in 20 minutes, which hopefully won't take so long. For the next one is floor coverings and, yeah, floor coverings, item 11. Again, is that?
It's me because, yes, no, Jason is unwell, so I'll be presenting this one.
James, you can do that. Okay, right. Thanks very much, folks. Yeah, so, yeah, item 11. James?
Thank you, Chair. So this is a report seeking authorisation from the committee to go out to secure a new contract for the supply and fitting of floor coverings across council housing and also corporate estates. But the lion's share is council housing, hence why it's coming to this committee. The proposed contract duration is for up to four years. The current contract expires on the 30th of November, so we do need to do this. And the forecast value is 6.5 million, but it is a demand led service, so it will cost what it will cost. The bulk of this will be done in the furnished accommodation, the temporary accommodation and the void property services. Almost all of our furnished and temporary accommodation has floor coverings everywhere. And our general needs void properties also have floor coverings in bathrooms and kitchens and that sort of thing. So it's a big contract. You can imagine quite a lot of this is done. We do rely on external providers for this sort of work, so we obviously always ask ourselves the question when we let a new contract, can we do it in house? This is a good example of something that is not possible, we think, to do in house because it fluctuates significantly. We often need it very, very quickly. And the suppliers that we can secure through a contract like this can secure floor coverings in a bulk that we cannot. And therefore, we get cost savings from that. As well as the actual floor coverings, the contract will also include kind of As well as the actual floor coverings, the contract will also include kind of ancillary items like surface preparation and also responsible waste disposal where they're removing existing floor coverings. I think that's all I was going to say, Chair, but I'm happy to attempt to answer questions.
Thanks very much, Chair. It is a, another procurement which formally has to come here. I think it's worth reflecting, I think in the tenant voices matter meeting, there was some discussion about various different types of carpets and the, the need for carpets, but in terms of the procurement of actually getting the jobs done when required, I don't think there was any particular feedback there. Members got any burning questions about carpets or are members happy to go straight to the vote and approve that? I think the recommendation is fairly simple one, sorry, there is councillor Williams, carpet question.
Apologies. Yeah, I just assumed that there's appropriate break clauses for lack of performance, that's really standard, standard elements. Is that a question you can answer, James, about break clauses?
I can, I cannot, I don't want to give you that assurance without definitely checking. I suspect that will be the case, but I will, I will confirm outside the meeting.
Presumably it's the sort of contract where it just allows us to order carpets as needed, so if we decide to just not order any more carpets, then we can do that, I'm guessing. Councillor Norris?
It's just a quickie, at the tenant's voices matter meeting, people were raising the issue of carpets being ripped out between tenancies, even though the carpets were in good condition. And I can appreciate why that might happen, but I just wondered if we can say anything in the contract about hard floor coverings in temporary accommodation, where we know we're going to get, we're going to have to change tenants frequently just to try and, you know, the contractors would be specialists, not me, but how could we manage the change over costs in, where we know that the, the turnover of tenants is going to be high?
Happy to take that away, councillor Norris. I think there's another bit we get feedback on sometimes, which is in general needs properties that become void, where you have carpets, we'll often rip out the carpets and then we don't provide floor coverings for new tenants. And I think there's a, there's definitely an emphasis that needs to be on where, where it's appropriate to leave it, we should be leaving it. The issue will often be that it's quite subjective, isn't it, definition of what's appropriate and is it clean and has there been smoking in the house or has there been pets in the house, that sort of thing, yeah.
Thanks, yeah. It, it is a procurement issue and so relatively routine, but I think as councillor Norris said, we don't want to underestimate the importance of carpets. And I just had a, speaking to a tenant today who's been through repeat homelessness with her family, but actually the thing that was bugging her now is lack of carpets. She's end up in a flat with no carpets in Rotherham. All right, so the recommendation's on page hundred and eighty-five, hundred and ninety-five and so it is just to approve the recommissioning of this contract. Members happy with that? Yeah, not all round, I think, yeah, so I think we can treat that as unanimous. Thank you very much, James. And then move on to the capital outturn report, which is item twelve of the agenda, pages two hundred and five onwards. And Dean, are you going to speak on this one?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The report is for noting, but this report sets out the council, how the council delivered against the capital programme for the twenty-four, twenty-five financial year. At the end of quarter four, as within the report, the approved capital budget was fifty-two point two million, made up primarily of the housing investment programme of approximately twenty-eight million and the stock increase programme of twenty-one million. Of this figure, we actually spent forty-five million of that budget allocation. The main reason for the underspend was the external wall insulation three programme underspending of around about two point three million and also the elemental and voids programme, which underspent by approximately no point nine million, which has now escalated during this current year and actually caught up with the spending profile. The stock increase programme had a, an underspend variance of two point six million, was, which again was primarily down to reprofiling and internal adjustments. What is very clear for us within this programme is that for a number of years now, we've not spent a hundred percent of the capital programme and that's something that clearly we have got to address. And we're putting measures in place through effective governance to make sure that, one, we understand how each of our individual capital projects is performing, recognising that some of those projects will have a legitimate slippage and underspend and some of those will be that our original costings have actually come in higher than actually what the actual cost of the work has done and that will create an underspend. However, what we want to be able to do is have some other projects that, that we have packaged ready to go, so if we do have an underspend, we can actually fully utilise the capital programme within that year. Members will also note that we've had past conversations around an asset management strategy that would, the draft strategy will be coming back to committee in March this year and that will set out again the priorities of where we're going to spend, therefore where we've got slippage within the programme and we want to put new programmes in place to maximise the spend, where we're going to prioritise that particular spend. So I'm happy to take questions, Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we've got fifteen minutes so far, a couple of questions. Good councillor Leary first of all.
Thanks, Chair. A bit concerning that we're understand, underspending on capital when the balance of capital from the HRA has been going down. So we really need to address that situation because we, we want the actual capital to be going up, not down and we don't want to have significant overspend in the future. Thank you.
Councillor Everett, I completely agree with that and what we've potentially done in the past is totally underestimated the length of time that it gets some of our projects on site. So I said at the beginning of the year that we'll get something on site and it's taken significantly longer than we've anticipated. And one of those things that we've got to streamline our processes to get through the governance of the approval to make sure that we can maximise that budget spend.
Thanks. Councillor, yeah, that was a good point. Councillor Dwyer?
Yeah, appreciate the time, but I think if I left and didn't get answers to these, it'd keep me up at night. It was just in the appendix three, it was forward plan and I'm new on the committee, so I don't understand all of this, but in adaptations and access, in twenty-six, twenty-seven, it goes to zero pounds spent on our adaptation capital. And then in the health and safety essential work, we see a doubling, well, more than doubling of that spend to twenty-five million from eleven point five and then it stays about that. So is there some legislation that's coming into place that we expect to see a big uptick in the health and safety capital spend we need to do?
So just check, we've got the reference, so it's appendix three you're referring to, because there's a few tables.
Two one nine.
It's like two one nine, right. And Dean, just so if you needed the reference to the lines that councillor Dwyer gave.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that is clear in error in terms of our finance reporting and I'll come back with a, with an answer for that particular question. It, it's definitely not zero in terms of the, the monies that we spend in aging adaptations.
Yeah, because we've just passed a policy as we'd hoped, means we do spend something. And is the health and safety related to an uptick in something?
Yeah, so I won't dwell on that now because of time, but essentially what's happened is the committee, I think, is aware that we've had a whole series of new obligations on the council around building safety via safety compliance related obligations that have created significant pressures in the capital programme. So what we've seen over the last couple, couple of years is the proportion of the capital programme that's focused on those areas has had to increase and will continue to have to increase over the coming years.
Right, thanks very much. Is there another table to recirculate afterwards in due course? That's fine. Otherwise, we might, there might have been a little bit on that adaptations policy that no one told us about. Right, good to see that typo corrected. Councillor Norris?
It's just on the external wall insulation scheme. Certainly we've had a, tenants in Sevenside on my, in my ward have really reported noticeable improvements, you know, not having to, in the past having to, having had to have the heating on all day and now only having to keep it on for a couple of hours, having rooms in the houses that were never warm becoming warm. I wanted to know how are we going to evaluate across the board the impact of that external wall insulation scheme, both on tenant satisfaction bills and carbon saving?
Thank you councillor Norris. I think that is one of the criteria that is within the social housing decarbon fund two and three bits that we were successful within. So these are funded primarily by external funded, that is matched funded by our internal capital programme. And one of the things that my decarbonisation team will be doing on the conclusion of those pieces of work is doing that evaluation and we'll be able to report back. And I think we've already mentioned that we'll be providing routine updates in terms of the decarbonisation work that we're doing and I would propose that we bring the evaluation back within those reports.
Thanks, that sounds very positive. Right, okay. Any other questions on that? We've got the figures now and with that type will be recirculated. Should we go straight to the recommendation then, which is essentially to note it, it's on page two hundred and six of the agenda pack, so note the twenty-four, twenty-five housing capital programme outturn at the end of quarter four and then note the updated budget position for the five year housing capital programme up until twenty twenty-nine, asset out in appendix three, which you looked at. Obviously perhaps with the correct one to be recirculated, I realise for that we'll need to publish that on the website, so there's a full record there, I think, won't we? But are members happy to agree to that? If so, thank you very much. Okay. And that is the final item on the agenda for this time, so thanks for everyone's quite detailed questions on things to get to grips with things, reflecting back what tenants said to us. Thanks to all the offices for responding and we look forward to all the programme work in due course. Thank you.